A regular council meeting for Tuesday, July 11th, 2023. Sorry, we're getting a little bit of a late start. We had a work session that ran a little bit late. But again, thank you for being here tonight. At this time, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Hines, would you lead us, sir?
Absolutely. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I found this on the web.
That was great.
Okay, then.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Sakura.
Here.
Terrencey.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deanne.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Calendino.
Here, all present, and we have a quorum. Thank you. First item on the agenda is swearing in of some of our, or one of our fire folks. Could you introduce her, please?
Yep. Mayor and Council, a new EMT for City of Utica, Angela Schutz. I think I said it right, didn't I? Schutz? Okay. She comes to us, fully trained as an EMT, works for MedStar, is her normal job. And she's been an active member so far, so.
Could raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state, and the Charter for the City of Utica, and the rules and regulations, and policies and procedures of the City of Utica Fire Department, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of paramedic for the City of Utica Fire Department according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
That's fine. That's nice.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Welcome back from your vacation.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Of course. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks again. Have a great night.
You too.
Next on the agenda is public comments for any items that are listed on the agenda. Anyone that wishes to speak will be allotted three minutes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to any item on the agenda? There is no unfinished business. Next item is consent business. I'd be asking for a motion to approve everything in consent.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deanne, support by O'Donnell. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We have no correspondence tonight. Under new business, our first item is the homecoming parade for Utica High School. Is the petitioner here tonight? If you could step up to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Gabrielle Boskovich. Do you want me to give me my address?
Just Utica High School, right?
Okay, yeah.
That's good enough.
And I am the president of Utica High School Student Council. I am here today to ask for permission to have the roads from Jimmy Johnsfield to Utica High School closed off so that we can have our annual homecoming parade. We are asking to close off Auburn Road to Cass Avenue, which eventually leads into Shelby Road up until Utica High School. We know that last year, the police helped us out with the aspect, and we hope they will assist again. The parade will begin on September 15th at 4:30 and end around 6:00 PM. I am so glad that we can do it this year, and it will be no different from last year. And if there's anything that I missed, please ask me any questions.
You did great. Does anyone from council have any questions? It sounds like it's exactly the same as last year, right?
Yeah, nothing changed.
I would expect, you know, as you get closer to this, to talk to Chief Kaluzny and Chief Willsec, make sure that they're on board with everything you're doing.
Yeah.
We would be looking for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sakura, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council?
I think you have two, at least two chieftains up here that are in favor of this, even though our city attorney doesn't get a vote, I know that in her heart. Class of 90, class of...
Perfect.
Like 890.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ron. Sorry, sorry, friend.
I know you get excited.
They didn't even have, they had abacusess back then, not even calculators. It's been a minute.
Very good. Any further discussion from council?
Nobody likes him.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations. The parade is a big deal in Utica, as you know. I think I've been to it every year for the last, I don't know, since my kids were little, and they're all out of school now.
You can stick around if you'd like.
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
Thanks again. Go chieftains. Next on the agenda is the 2023 Parkinson's Hero Walk. Allison Chance, is Allison in the audience tonight? When is this event?
September 23rd, right?
Yes, September 23rd.
Do we, I'm not sure we need her here for this. It's one of the fairly commonplace lane closures for Jimmy Johns walk. The date is September 23rd. What was the date for the homecoming? I gotta check.
15th of 15th.
Okay, yeah. Just wanted to check.
Mayor, if I could, Chief Kaluzny and I had been talking to Ms. Chance about this race. They were originally asking for the northbound, or the north side of Auburn closed for four hours, and Chief Kaluzny was explaining to her how that's not feasible with the manpower and whatnot. So I don't know if they came to a different conclusion since we last spoke to her.
Mayor and Council, as the city clerk had mentioned, I'd been in, we've been in correspondence with the organizers of the run and stuff, and I had expressed to them that, you know, we can have release services for the start of the run that we typically do because it's not taxing on our services. But in order for us to dedicate officers, we don't have the manpower to dedicate officers without them contracting to actually bring them in. Because the cost of manpower for officers to sit out there for four hours to actually block the road and make it safe for pedestrians is something that, from the city's side, for, you know, for our police department, we just don't have in our budget to go ahead and...
And do we know if that was a requirement, to block the lane for four hours?
That's what it says.
That's what's in the request.
It was a request of theirs. I mean, it is a Parkinson's walk, so she was afraid that the sidewalk on the bridge wasn't wide enough for those who may need a wider sidewalk.
Well, that's, I guess, a valid concern, but I don't, like, for a lot of reasons, I don't see that we can block off that whole lane for four hours.
Can I make a motion to table this? I mean, I know the event's in two months, so it would be a matter of, the petitioner is not here to answer any questions. This is not really feasible from our standpoint, so how does it get rectified? But they need to come up with a solution, and then we can vote on it, I guess, in August.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion to table.
I support that.
Motion by Sakura, support by Robinson. Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call.
The one thing I'm thinking, I, and I'm not saying it's a yes or no vote for me, but they are having a run, and they do have to have people register, and the later it gets, you know, it's harder to get people to register. If we, if we don't make that vote until August 12th, say, which is the meeting...
They should have been here.
Then they should, okay.
Yeah, I mean, they should have appeared, I would think.
And if this has been already addressed to them and talked about, the solution has not been put forth or a suggestion, so just as we talked about the social district, the ball's in their court.
Agreed.
Mr. Mayor, sir, have we done this in the past? Because this one just doesn't sound familiar to me.
I remember.
No, not this. We do quite a few, and I think we're going to be discussing another one shortly.
What's the actual path? Is this similar to the Casey, the Casey Hines?
You know, I don't, I think we have a motion. I don't know if I really want to delve deeper into that, though.
This is our discussion part, isn't it?
It is, but I...
Well, I'm asking questions for the discussion part.
Okay, ask your question, please. We need to move along, though.
I was.
Continue.
Disregard. Move on.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Just for clarification, the motion is to table this, correct?
Correct.
Well, to be clear, a tabling motion actually postpones indefinitely. It really should be postponed to the next meeting or whatever.
Postpone.
Postponed.
Okay, I'll amend my petition to say postpone to the next city council meeting.
And I will amend my support of that. I'll support that very well.
Thank you. Sakura.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations. The parade is a big deal in Utica, as you know. I think I've been to it every year for the last, I don't know, since my kids were little, and they're all out of school now.
You can stick around if you'd like.
You don't have to.
You don't have to. Thanks again. Go chieftains. Next on the agenda is the 2023 Parkinson's Hero Walk. Allison Chance, is Allison in the audience tonight? When is this event?
September 23rd, right?
Yes. September 23rd.
Do we, I'm not sure we need her here for this. It's one of the fairly commonplace lane closures for Jimmy Johns walk. The date is September 23rd. What was the date for the homecoming? I gotta check.
15th of 15th.
Okay, yeah. Just wanted to check.
Mayor, if I could, Chief Kaluzny and I had been talking to Ms. Chance about this race. They were originally asking for the northbound, or the north side of Auburn closed for four hours, and Chief Kaluzny was explaining to her how that's not feasible with the manpower and whatnot. So I don't know if they came to a different conclusion since we last spoke to her.
Mayor and Council, as the city clerk had mentioned, I'd been in, we've been in correspondence with the organizers of the run and stuff, and I had expressed to them that, you know, we can have release services for the start of the run that we typically do because it's not taxing on our services. But in order for us to dedicate officers, we don't have the manpower to dedicate officers without them contracting to actually bring them in. Because the cost of manpower for officers to sit out there for four hours to actually block the road and make it safe for pedestrians is something that, from the city's side, for, you know, for our police department, we just don't have in our budget to go ahead and...
And do we know if that was a requirement, to block the lane for four hours?
That's what it says.
That's what's in the request.
It was a request of theirs. I mean, it is a Parkinson's walk, so she was afraid that the sidewalk on the bridge wasn't wide enough for those who may need a wider sidewalk.
Well, that's, I guess, a valid concern, but I don't, like, for a lot of reasons, I don't see that we can block off that whole lane for four hours.
Can I make a motion to table this? I mean, I know the event's in two months, so it would be a matter of, the petitioner is not here to answer any questions. This is not really feasible from our standpoint, so how does it get rectified? But they need to come up with a solution, and then we can vote on it, I guess, in August.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion to table.
I support that.
Motion by Sakura, support by Robinson. Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call.
The one thing I'm thinking, I, and I'm not saying it's a yes or no vote for me, but they are having a run, and they do have to have people register, and the later it gets, you know, it's harder to get people to register. If we, if we don't make that vote until August 12th, say, which is the meeting...
They should have been here.
Then they should, okay.
Yeah, I mean, they should have appeared, I would think.
And if this has been already addressed to them and talked about, the solution has not been put forth or a suggestion, so just as we talked about the social district, the ball's in their court.
Agreed.
Mr. Mayor, sir, have we done this in the past? Because this one just doesn't sound familiar to me.
I remember.
No, not this. We do quite a few, and I think we're going to be discussing another one shortly.
What's the actual path? Is this similar to the Casey, the Casey Hines?
You know, I don't, I think we have a motion. I don't know if I really want to delve deeper into that, though.
This is our discussion part, isn't it?
It is, but I...
Well, I'm asking questions for the discussion part.
Okay, ask your question, please. We need to move along, though.
I was.
Continue.
Disregard. Move on.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Just for clarification, the motion is to table this, correct?
Correct.
Well, to be clear, a tabling motion actually postpones indefinitely. It really should be postponed to the next meeting or whatever.
Postpone.
Postponed.
Okay, I'll amend my petition to say postpone to the next city council meeting.
And I will amend my support of that. I'll support that very well.
Thank you. Sakura.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda, T-Mobile. I know we have the representative here. If you could step up to the podium and give us your name and address, sir.
Oops, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It took his knee out.
Not a good start.
Daniel Jainer, 14095. I don't live out on the side. I live on the side that, we still live out here, but I live in Plymouth, Michigan, and I enjoy coming out here to the baseball field and taking some of my grandkids to those games. So thank you guys for taking the time and putting out a nice double-A game out here at baseball. It's a lot of fun. I've had my kids, my grandkids there. I'm Daniel Jainer. I'm the account executive for government for the state of Michigan, and I am supporting all the local governments and a number of K-12 institutions, including Utica Public Schools, and I'm looking forward to helping the city save some money on their mobility and a couple of their applications. The first one that I want to talk about right now is that I've been talking to a number of the, talking to the mayor and the treasurer and the clerk about camera system on the tunnel to perfect from vandalism on that side. So we have a proposal right now in front of you guys right now that is to put four cameras there to protect that area and to help the police in connecting and protecting that area and see if we can video and catch any of the criminals or vandalism wherever else is doing the painting on the tunnel and that piece. That's four cameras, and we've got a proposal right now that the cameras are $250 each, and then the ongoing charge for that is $140 a year. And then also, one of the other versions for the plan right now is $100, and we can make that decision. But right now, the total monthly charge would be $1,000 for the cameras and $100 for the monthly service for those four cameras. And then we'd like to partner with DPW in regards to putting up some, a solution for the protection for those cameras so they don't get vandalized.
And I believe I asked you this, how does that data, it doesn't go to the cloud? Is that a cloud service?
It is a cloud service, and it'll be streamed to anyone on your network, or it can be streamed to individual devices, depending on if you want a DPW or police.
Mr. Mayor, can we either figures again? I heard him say $1,000 a month.
No, it's $1,000 for the equipment. It's $100 a month.
For the store.
I thought those statements were together, okay.
I thought it was $1,000 a month.
Yeah, we don't have that in the packet. All we have...
I've got it, I've got it right here for you guys. I've got, I've got copies.
Do you have, maybe if you gave council copies? Because all we have in the packet is this one proposal, and it's, it's T-Mobile, One Government Voice.
That's the, that's for the cellular phones.
So that's all that's in the packet.
Okay, here you go.
I thought this was for the blue light.
I think I have extra copies.
That's what it says here. It says park blue light conversion savings, camera tunnel offer. $1,000.
Say.
What was this for a month?
$100. That's just for this.
It's just that tunnel.
Okay, your next item, sir?
My next item is to replace the blue lights that are in the park that you guys are currently overpaying for, and we've got a proposal in front of you guys right, I got another proposal in front of you right now where that service right now would be $89.90 a month, or it can be reduced to, it can be reduced down to $29 a month if you pay for the hardware upfront, and the hardware upfront is $479. To replace those blue lights, you are currently paying over $800 a month for those pots lines and that service and those blue lights. We show a return on investment in less than, less than three months, and the service will be better. That pots line that you have right now is not regulated. That charge is going to go up again, probably in another six months for you. So if you guys want to replace those lights, we can probably show you a savings of right now north of $300 a month in regards to those blue lights in the park. And I have those proposals right here, too.
Yep, that's not in our packet.
And sir, when you say replace lights, do you mean replace the, the structure of the lights or the technology inside?
The technology.
Okay.
Really, what you mean is the way it communicates. You're not changing anything with the light.
I'm not changing anything with the light. I'm just giving you, I'm giving you different connectivity. I'm giving you T-Mobile's connectivity.
It's the same one we have, wasn't it? No. I don't know. Yep.
This is the blue light.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, and your next item, sir?
My next item I have for you is the, is replacing the staff's current carrier from Verizon to T-Mobile for the, for the mayor and the staff for, to T-Mobile, and also providing a substantial savings there by providing them, we have a program right now for the government where we can supply free devices. We can supply free, three, four, three, four cell phones and one tablet at a reduction in cost, again, of probably close to 50% of what you're paying right now for the Verizon, for your Verizon phones for the staff. And that's just another opportunity for the city to save some money in regards to their services, in regards to the mobility for the staff's cell phones. You guys, and that's a proposal that I've also got inside there, too.
Worst part is, we only have one proposal, so I have nothing to look at, nothing to have considered in advance. And then you say it could be approximate. I want to know what the savings is.
I can, I can put together the actual savings first. That was the actual proposal, and I've got the actual phone bill that you guys have here right now. Your monthly statement right now in regards to the lights themselves was $510 last month.
For the lights?
For the lights.
And that's both lights, correct?
That's both lights. That number is going to go up in the next, as I said, in the next four to six months because it's not regulated.
And your fee is going to be?
Our fee is going to be, I gave you guys my copy. Our fee is going to be $100 a month and $1,000 for the cam.
And how long is that?
Well, I thought that was for the tunnel cameras.
No, that's, that's, that's the, that's the tunnel, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I look at clarification.
Can I, just based on what I said before, I'm going to make a motion to postpone until this data is given to us to look at. You want to give the comparisons, but we're fled, you're fledging around looking at your sheets.
Well, I, I put, I thought I put, I uploaded everything.
You have one thing in a packet.
I updated, I updated all the documents I could to, all the, the exact documents I uploaded to the packet, and I apologize if you didn't get them.
We didn't get them.
My motion again is to table this, to postpone this to the next council meeting.
That's a part.
Support.
Motion by...
I thought you guys got all this information, so...
No, sir. Motion by Sakura, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council? I will say, I, even next month, I think we need to do comparables. We need to have our treasurer look at everything and sign off on it. So, yeah, I would say definitely give us the information, but even at next council meeting, I don't know if we'd be voting, you know, I don't know if a motion would come up to approve this because I wouldn't be ready to vote yet until we had discussions with our treasurer to make sure those savings were there, and that we've had other estimates for similar services.
This may be an appropriate motion to table, and then he can bring it back with all the documentation. He can review it though, and then put it on the, you know, the schedule. Rather than making him and you and everyone adhere to a certain timeframe, this might be appropriate to table.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to table this.
Support.
Well, there's a motion on the floor already, so it needs to be a friendly amendment, and then friendly...
I will make a motion to amend the first motion from postponed to table.
Support.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You got my email or clerks, any other documents that we need, just please get them over to her, okay?
Well, do you want a clarification of the exact savings and put together? Because I can put together the return on investment on all three pieces of technology. Are you interested in all three pieces of technology? The cameras in the tunnel, the reduction of the mobility for the staff, and the blue light technology?
Yes, but it's got to be in a coherent, you know, organized fashion that we can understand quite easily.
I'll put it in one document for you guys, and then we'll get a chance, and I'll put that forth to you guys.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Second Charles, secondhand dealer transaction charge. Mr. Curtis Stokes?
Todd Noden.
Pardon me, can you say?
Todd Noden.
Todd Noden.
Thank you, sir.
And if you could just repeat your name, sir, for the mic, so you're on record.
Yes, my name is Todd Noden. I'm the chief financial officer of Second and Charles. I reside in Birmingham, California, Birmingham, Alabama, although I was born in Detroit and raised in Ann Arbor, so I'm a Michigander. It's been 20 some years, but the reason for me being here is to discuss the secondhand dealer pawn shop transaction fee and, and the impact that it has on our business. And then I've got a proposal or a request of how we comply with this moving forward. What I have in the packet is several pages just to orient you towards the, what kind of store we operate.
Sir, could you, do you have an extra copy you can give our chief, please? He actually administers a lot of this.
I have another one over here.
You got an extra one? Okay.
Nope.
No, sir.
Motion by Sikora, support by Trenzey, any discussion from counsel? I will say, even next month, I think we need to do comparables. We need to have our treasurer look at everything and sign off on it. So, yeah, I would say definitely give us the information. But even at next council meeting, I don't know if we'd be voting, you know, I don't know if a motion would come up to approve this because I wouldn't be ready to vote yet until we had discussions with our treasurer to make sure those savings were there and that we've had other estimates for similar services.
This may be an appropriate motion to table, and then he can bring it back without documentation. He can review it though, and then put it on the, you know, the schedule. Rather than making him and you and everyone adhere to a certain timeframe, this might be appropriate to table.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to table this.
Support.
Well, there's a motion on the floor already, so it needs to be a friendly amendment and then friendly.
I will make a motion to amend the first motion from postponed to table.
Support.
Any further discussion from counsel? Ma'am clerk, roll call home, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, most curious. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You got my email or clerks, any other documents that we need, just please get them over to her, okay?
Well, do you want a clarification of the exact savings and put together, because I can put together a return on investment on all three pieces of technology. Are you interested in all three pieces of technology? The cameras in the tunnel, the reduction of the mobility for the staff, and the blue light technology.
Sure. Yes, but it's gotta be in a coherent, you know, organized fashion that we can understand quite easily.
I'll put it in one document for you guys, and then we'll get a chance and I'll put that forth to you guys.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Second Charles, secondhand dealer transaction charge, Mr. Curtis Stokes?
Todd.
Pardon me, can you say?
Todd Noden.
Todd Noden.
Thank you, sir.
And if you could just repeat your name, sir, for the mic, so you're on record.
Yes, my name is Todd Noden. I'm the chief financial officer of Second Charles. I reside in Birmingham, California, or Birmingham, Alabama, although I was born in Detroit and raised in Ann Arbor. So, I'm a Michigander. It's been twenty some years, but the reason for me being here is to discuss the secondhand dealer pawn shop transaction fee and the impact that it has on our business. And then I've got a proposal or a request of how we comply with this moving forward. What I have in the packet is several pages just to orient you towards the, what kind of store we operate.
Sir, could you, do you have an extra copy you can give our chief, please? He actually administers.
I have another one over here.
You got an extra one there? Okay.
Nope, that's from Nora. Thanks.
Thank you. So a short history of our store in Utica. We're located on Utica Park Boulevard. So it was interesting to hear all the other things going around in that area. And as you can see from, I've got three pictures here, we're a 30,000 square foot store. It's bright, well lit, well merchandised. We sell primarily books. Approximately 50% of what we sell is books. 30% of what we sell is gifts, which can be categorized as toys, pop culture items, t-shirts, mugs. The remainder is media, video games, videos, vinyl, and musical instruments. From the standpoint of high value items, it would be rare and collectible items, could be some musical instruments. That represents about 1% of the items that we purchase from a customer. It is a unique store concept. We merchandise, and this is what's important about our buyback business. We merchandise to the taste of the local community through these buyback transactions. And we sell a combination of new and used products. The majority of what we sell is new. Over 60% of the items that we sell is new. 40% of the items, and this is based on sales price, sales, 40% of the items come from items that we acquire through our customers in the public. When we acquire items from the public, we have two offers. We offer either cash, so we'll pay them cash for what they're selling us, or we give them store credit, offer the store credit. 70 to 90% of the people who sell to us, and these are of our most active customers in a given year, they choose the store credit route. And then they come back into the store within 60 days, and they use that credit to buy other items that we have. So it's somewhat of a virtual circuit. Then, and the whole point is with dealing with the credits, this is really, it's unique to our business model, and it's a key component to getting the product that is attractive, hot in this local market, back circulated out through the market. It would be very hard to acquire that product because a lot of it isn't available anymore. And so that's one of the things that's unique about our business. Let me move down here onto the, onto the fourth page. The, one of our key points here that I hope you can respect is that Second Charles is predominantly not a secondhand dealer, and because the majority of our sales are new products. Secondhand dealer as is defined in the Michigan statute around the definition of a secondhand dealer. I understand that Utica defines it differently. There is not this predominantly criteria. It's just anybody that's dealing in used products.
Do you have a citation for that act?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a citation for that act? An MCL?
For the, for the Michigan Act?
For the Michigan Act.
Yes, I do. It is, it's on the fourth page, so it's Act 350 of 1917.
Do you have an MCL for it?
I'm sorry?
Do you have an MCL for it?
I don't. I think, I think if you Google that, it'll, you'll find it. And I have some other documents that an attorney helped us with. I can see if, if it's in there. But I assure you, that's how they, that's how they define a secondhand dealer. From the standpoint of our store, we opened in 2016. We employ 16 associates. We pay roughly $180,000 in various taxes. Sales tax was $115,000, payroll tax $22,000, real estate tax $42,000. So we're, you know, we're a proud member of this business community, and we want to continue to be a member of the business community. And we're compliant with all of the existing reporting rules for, for a secondhand dealer. Leeds Online, we report every transaction that we, that we purchase to the police department. The next page, so this will take a little bit of a discussion and explanation. I wanted to give you a flavor of the types of product and the value of product that we buy back and the impact that $1.50 per transaction is going to have on a business like ours. $1.50 doesn't sound like a lot. It's $1.50. However, if you look at this chart to the, on the left-hand side of the page, it's a Pareto of the value of a transaction, not the value of an item, the value of a transaction that we, that we buy back. 74% of the transaction volumes are less than $15. So when you think about that in terms of tax, because this, you know, if we're business, this is a tax. That's, you know, that's at least a 10% tax on that buyback transaction, which could represent five items, three items, seven items. You can see down towards the left-hand side of that x-axis, you know, 2%, 5%, 4%. So that's six, 8% of the items are less than $2 that we're buying back. And these are, these are products that customers come to the store, and they see that there's value in that item, and we are helping them trade that in, because they're taking credits for the most part, and allow them to go buy something else. So, and it's, it's a really popular business model with, with the customers. From the standpoint of the transactions that are, that are more high value and maybe of risk, dealing with theft, you can see that's 1% of the, 1% of the transactions are over $100. And I don't think, and Chief, you know, correct me, and you may know this, I haven't checked the exact occurrences, and I don't know if we've been notified, I don't think we've ever gotten caught up in a theft inquiry for the products that we're selling or buying back from, from customers. So, my point is, from the standpoint of impact on our business, the transaction fee is disproportionately high compared to the value of the products that we're buying back. This will impede our customer traffic, because you, just, just imagine, you come in, you, you've got three books. We offer you, and this is the, the market value of those books, we offer you $4 for those, and then we're gonna, we're also gonna take from that $1.50 from you, the person selling it back to us, offer that, and it's, and it's gonna go to Utica. And that person is just gonna go, what happened? You know, this really isn't worth, worth my time. And they're gonna view it as a tax. So, it's, it's gonna significantly affect our business. So, in summary, the, our, our business model is unique. It's, it's an engaging retail location. You can see from the pictures, looks nothing like a pawn shop, and I don't believe we were one of the three pawn shops that you referenced. We're not a pawn shop. The ordinance is inconsistent with the Michigan Act. I understand that you can have your own definition. You're free to do that, but statewide, it's, it's inconsistent in terms of the definition of a secondhand dealer. And this classification puts the store in an unnecessary regulatory position with really no benefit to the community. We're happy to continue to report. You know, if that's, if that's what you need from a law enforcement standpoint, we've already got it set up. We're more than happy to continue to do that. This is really about the transaction fee. Pawn shop laws are primarily focused on regulation of a business susceptible to dealing with stolen property. That's not books. It's, it's just simply not. We don't fall within that category or the types of products that are predominantly purchased. Our low transaction amount for us, and the business, this is one of the things that I found interesting when I looked at, at the ordinance, we are comparable to secondhand clothing retailers who are exempt from this. I don't know why. I think it's, it's a great benefit to them, but I think in terms of the value of the transaction, it's similar to what somebody would get for selling clothing to a Play-Doh's closet or for that type of operation. So, the last point I've said a couple of times is it's an excessive fee, and it's gonna, it's gonna impact our store traffic overall. So, what I respectfully request, to be exempt from the ordinance or to structure the transaction fee that's proportionate to the value of the transaction that, that we're dealing with. Or, we can, you know, we're more than happy to just, let's limit this to cash transactions and not the credit. Because that's, we're just dealing in, in credits, there's no cash involved. And, and we'd be, you know, that, to me, that's separate from a pawn type transaction.
I need answers from our attorney and from our chief.
Unfortunately, these issues were just raised tonight, and I didn't want to look deeper into law. I mean, it's just unsighted. Five minutes.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I need to hear.
In our original submission, all we really got was four pictures. Right, but that's, that's what was submitted to us for part of the packet? Just four pictures with really no information?
Well, I'm, I'm here and made, made the presentation.
Couple, couple points?
Yeah.
Currently, it looks like you're $5,289 in arrears?
We've, we've, you have that check. We've sent you that check. Yeah, and, and there's, that's for the, that's for the license, I believe, and...
I'm so sorry. You sent a $50 check for the license renewal for the secondhand dealer, which I denied renewing because you have outstanding fees. So you've been without a license since June 30th because of the outstanding transaction fees.
And $1,945.50 of that is over 120 days overdue, so that...
We've, we've never gotten a notice, except for, I think it was a month ago in June, that, that these fees were due. These were suspended for, ever since we've been in business. So, I'm happy to pay the, pay the amount.
The, the other question is, this is by transaction, so your tables appear to me to be based on an item. Is that?
No, those aren't, those aren't items.
Is that a item cost or a transaction?
No, that is a transaction cost. That is, all of this is transaction.
Because a transaction could include like a bag, a grocery bag of books, right? That's one transaction, right?
Yeah, yes.
And that, and your data reflects that?
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Okay. Chief, would you like, those are the questions I had.
Sir, Mayor and counsel, so in, in looking into this, and, you know, we'll, we'll start with the, the transactions. As the mayor had indicated, this is on a per transaction, not per, per item that they buy. So, I pulled a list for the last 30 days and looked at the time period from June 10th to July 10th. And actually, there were two days that weren't reported on here. They had 524 transactions, and they bought 11,204 units. So when we look at the, the ordinance, what, what happens is the $1.50 transaction goes on the transaction. So on that 524 purchases or transactions that they completed, they've purchased 11,204 items. So when you extrapolate and you look at the $1.50 fee times a 524 works out to be $786 in ordinance fee that they owe the city. When you divide that over the per item that they purchased for that given month, that works out to 7 cents per item that they're paying on, on the items. Furthermore, when, when I received correspondence between one of their associates, they indicated to me that their yearly average is about 41 items per transaction that they complete. So when you look at 41 items per transaction, it really brings down your per item cost to almost about 3 to 4 cents per item when you're looking at that $1.50 fee.
Can I, can I counter that?
Sure.
Yeah. I, I think when you, when you look at the averages, that's exactly what you see. That's why I included this Pareto chart, so you can see what, what does the consumer actually experience? And it's, it's very clear. At, at $10, that's 25% of the items, you know, they're, they're gonna get 850 back. And that, that could be, that could be 10 items, could be seven, could be three, could be 20. But from the standpoint of the consumer, they've, they've packed their stuff up that they wanna, they want, they don't want anymore. And they want to turn that into credits at our store and walk away without their stuff. And we're gonna, we're gonna subtract $1.50 from, from, from those customers. So, but we, I agree with you. Per item, it don't make any sense at all. And, and, and that's really not how the customer's making the decision or proceeding the, the fee.
No. One of, one of the things on, on the ordinance, though, is the fee can be passed on to the consumer. It doesn't have to be passed on to the consumer.
Well...
So, so you can, you can choose not to pass it on to consumers?
I understand that. And then? Yeah, we're in business.
Okay.
And, and this is, this is an important part of our business, but we, for, for these types of items, we make merchandising decision on the margin that we're gonna make on this. We don't make very much money on this. And, and I'm just gonna lose more money. So, I, I could be forced to suspend it, and then our business model isn't gonna work anymore because of a $1.50 tax.
Sir, I'm looking, you said you didn't receive notices till June of 2023? Yes?
I, I believe that to be a case.
I'm looking at bill date to December 5th, 2022.
I'm not purposely not paying the money, so I'm not, I'm not, I'm not aware of that.
So is it possible you got, I'm just not aware of getting those invoices?
Could be, potentially. And again, if, if, if this is about the, the arrears and the fees, I'll pay the fees. We'll, we'll get you paid by the end of the week. What I want to discuss is a fee that was not in place or not enforced, and then now it is being enforced. And I want to give you the perspective of a business that is not a pawn shop, is not a secondhand dealer, and, and the effect that this is gonna have. On a pawn shop that's dealing in, in, in hundreds of dollars, it's nothing. But to a business like ours, it's significant.
Now, why do you report to this, this program? Leeds on?
It's, it's, it's part of the, it's part of the ordinance, Chief.
Is that a state requirement, a city requirement? Who's, who's making you report to that system?
That, that is part of our ordinance for the secondhand dealers, is they are, they are mandated to report to the system that the police department of the city has come up with and Leeds Online is a counter system that...
And that's a statewide system, right?
It's, it, there's several states that have this system.
Okay.
Yeah. And actually, it, it makes your job easier, or else we would give you data files. I don't know what you'd do with them. And so it, it, it streamlines their ability to find stolen items.
And that was my next question. And the purpose of that system is so that there's a record of secondhand transactions in case the item was stolen?
Who, who, who it was, we've got to validate their ID. Some, some places, we take fingerprints. It's, it's, it's very onerous. Not here, but, but we, we, we will have situations where we have to do that. But we don't have fees anywhere else. That's the...
So this is a fee to defray from the costs that the police department incurs in dealing with secondhand dealers, correct?
That's correct.
So that's not a tax, that's a fee?
The customers are gonna see it as a tax.
Okay, well, you were suggesting legally it was a tax, not a fee.
I never said legally. I'm saying how the, I'm here to speak to the perspective of the customer, and they're gonna see it as a tax.
May I ask a question? Why do we see them as a secondhand? I mean, I get the second, goods are brought in, goods are stored there, and then they can be, you give them credit and they can be sold back out to another person. So, I, I kind of find, I kind of fail to see the pawn aspect of it, because it doesn't feel like a pawn. And if the chief said they have never had an incident there, I'm sorry, the chief didn't say, the gentleman said it.
I said that, yeah.
You said they've never had an incident there. I wonder, is it, is the fee necessary to provide that service because the service is never used?
To that point...
Your one question, if we could just address that really, I'm sorry, councilman, is that pursuant to the definition in our ordinance, he's considered a secondhand dealer?
There is no stipulation like there is for the state that you are predominantly dealing in, in secondhand goods.
That's the issue. Yeah, that's, that's the issue we're talking about. I mean, do we charge this fee to used car dealers?
This, this fee goes to anybody that has a secondhand dealer license, so used car dealer does not fall under that.
And those are regulated in a different manner. You have liens on cars, or you have, you know, titles and it's more easy to check the ownership.
Those have to be licensed by the state of Michigan, and you have to have a police book with every, every unit that you buy.
Sure. We use the example of clothing. That, that's sort of, that's sort of my point, though, is that when I think of pawn shop, I mean, maybe our definition of what a secondhand dealer is, needs to be revised, right? I, I just don't think that when it comes to the sort of funds we're trying to raise to, like you said, defray the costs of enforcement, I'm not really seeing somebody bringing in a stolen copy of Rush Limbaugh's 2003 book. I'm just not, right? So...
I think we're deliberating now. I think we should get a motion on the table and then open the discussion for counsel.
I mean, is...
I, I don't know if legally, you know, we, we can't really immediately act on what the suggested action is is to, for an exclusion from the transaction for your modifications to the fee structure, because that's all controlled via our ordinance.
Well, it's confusing because the agenda item summary says that, but I mean, really, that should say a motion to amend the ordinance to do this, to remove me from the secondhand dealer? Or is it a motion to revise the fee schedule? Is it a motion to excuse past due fees? I mean, it's not really clear coming in here on the agenda item summary, what specifically it was that you were seeking.
Mr. Mayor, I would say also that ordinance probably doesn't really, was never enacted, and with his business model in mind, be my guess. That business, that ordinance is probably enacted to hit the pawn stores and that type of resale. And I think, my, my guess that the book thing is in trading, it doesn't seem like that's, it didn't feel that the ordinance hits that market.
I think we need more research, too. Like, what other businesses that maybe are not what we would consider traditional pawn shops are covered under this ordinance?
I was about to, that was gonna be my comment, was we do have several, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have plenty of other businesses that are classified as a secondhand dealer that operate similar to a pawn shop but aren't labeled as a pawn shop, because they deal in electronics, video games, things that are highly stolen and then resold. So the whole purpose of that direct fee is to pay for Leeds Online.
And, and those, those businesses that you're referencing do, you know...
Subscribe.
Yes, and, and they do, they, they are billed, and they do, they do make their monthly payments and stuff on them, so...
Question. Besides books, what do you take in?
Besides books, we take in the gift items. It could be collectible, Funko Pop dolls that are, you know, basically a value of $5. We do vinyl records, CDs, DVDs. Those are also all relatively low, low value items.
Okay, high value.
Well, the high value, yeah. So it could be musical instruments, and that represents 1% of, of what we, what we sell and what we buy, and of that, 90% of the time, people are taking credit.
But taking a credit doesn't mean it can't come to you stolen, okay? Plain and simple. It's just putting sugar on this, okay? So you're taking musical, which are very easily stolen, okay? Because if they know they can come to you and, and get a credit for it, there's no, you're asking no reporting, no nothing, okay?
Well, we, we, but we report, and, and I...
You do now, but you're asking if this be waived?
No. I, I'm, I'm happy to continue to report.
But recording stills, it incurs a cost to the city to process it, to make sure if it is stolen, we're gonna have to act on it. I understand your idea of one book comes in, okay? If a book, a bag of books come in, you just said people load up their stuff and they bring them to you. That was your word. So loading up is not one book coming to you.
We need to not continue deliberating and get a motion of some sort on the table so we can continue deliberation and eventually vote?
I'm gonna make a motion to, to deny this.
I'm not even sure what we're really denying.
I mean, there's, there's, there's certain things that I think that need to be looked at, maybe evaluated.
Yeah.
Let's, let's not deliberate yet.
I want, I want to deliberate on that.
I've got a motion to deny the request to be excluded for, from the transaction fee or modification to the fee structure. It doesn't mean we can't make another motion to...
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Sikora, support by Deion. Now we're open to deliberation.
Could I have a clarification of the motion again, please?
A motion to deny the request of the petitioner, that's listed on the AIS form.
Which is for an exclusion from the transaction fee or modifications to the fee structure.
I just feel like the fee that's assessed needs to be representative of the work that's required. If you're gonna charge a fee, there should be a service attached to it. If there's not been a service, then why are we charging a fee for a service that hasn't been used, or it's almost like a tax for something that may not ever happen? So, I, I disagree with it, only because this business is such a unique model that it does not, is a pawn store. He's not retaining goods to sell goods back out under the guise of they're not coming back for them. So it's not your traditional pawn store, and so I think the ordinance doesn't match the, the service to which we're requesting to be done on the business.
But this is also gonna open up another can of worms, because we have toy stores in the city that operate similarly, that have to fall under the similar stuff. We have music shops and electronic stores that are all gonna be coming to us and asking for the exact same thing, depending upon how we change it.
Who wants to charge?
This, this is just me just straight spitballing, and I'm not sure if there's something in the ordinance. I'll have to read the ordinance directly. Is there a cap on if it's under a certain amount, do we charge, do we still charge a fee?
No.
So if there's something where it's like, hey, I'm giving a $5 item, we're charging a fee for that, where it's just a single entry? Versus a $100 item, which is most likely, it has a higher chance of something being stolen and being turned in versus something that we need to actually track on, versus a $5 bag of books that somebody pulled out of their basement.
I agree with, uh, Big Brother. I'm, I'm on the track, for it, $50, $100, wherever the number is, a threshold says totally.
A cap level. If it's under, if it's under a certain amount, made you, I'm not sure about the liability.
And does that apply to pawn shops now? I mean...
Secondhand.
Well, yeah, it's the same, it'd have to be uniform, not, not just affecting one particular business. business.
So, the current motion is to deny his request as stated at this time. I'm not clear if people are saying they want an ordinance change or if they want to change to the fee structure.
That motion's not on the table right now.
Right.
I mean, I think.
I don't think we're sure either.
The motion right now that was made and supported was to, for an exclusion from the transaction fee or modifications to the fee structure request from the petitioner. So, I mean, we can deliberate, we can vote on this and continue on, you know, in a new deliberation. I think there's a lot of valid points to what the gentleman's making. But anything we do, and we can't, we can't change an ordinance tonight. I mean, that's worth having a discussion about, but that's not going to happen tonight. But we have to realize that anything we do, as Councilman Ryan kind of alluded to, that sets precedent, right? And we're going to have other people that are, that have unique business models as well that are coming to us for similar requests. So, for this motion, is there any other direct discussion from counsel before we go into a vote?
My question would be if we, as the motion has been laid out by mayor Pro Tem, and we decide to revisit this from an aspect of altering it.
That wasn't the motion.
Okay.
The motion was to deny the request.
But if we deny it now, can we?
Revisit it.
Revisit it?
Sure.
Especially you could still revisit changing the ordinance.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
No.
Ryan.
No.
Robinson.
No.
Mayor Calendrino.
Uh-oh.
Yes. So, what is the total?
Uh, yeah. Four yeses, three nos.
All right, so the motion was denied, your request was denied.
Yep, understand.
Do we want to open up any discussion about changing the ordinance? Again, it's.
Well, you should have a motion on the table.
I'll make a motion that we look at changing the ordinance to a more viable fee structure in comparison to all of our businesses that will be affected under the secondhand license.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, that's a very long motion for our city court to try to write.
Do you care to repeat that?
It may be more.
To revisit, to reevaluate the secondhand license ordinance and its fee structure.
Boom, that's beautiful, right there.
Continued support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Deanne. Open for discussion.
Can we get a owner of this project, AKA.
Paul Ryan.
Madam attorney, would you mind looking into what other cities do, what the definition of pawn shop is according to, you know, the MCL, et cetera?
Yeah, I mean, I can definitely look at the legalities and the ordinances and present, but I need direction on what the policymakers want to see.
Yeah, I'm going to say is like.
I don't think we know until we have.
There was really no way to, and I know it was a split vote, but there was no real way to, in a single vote, do what the petitioner was asking.
Yeah, so it's something that we definitely are going to need to look at as far as how we are going to adjust it. Do I think your business qualifies as a secondhand? I do. You take in items, you take in, whether it be low value or high value items. That's my interpretation of it.
Even though they're proportion.
Even though they're proportional, the fact is that you are taking in items and you have the propensity to take in stolen items, whether it be toy, collectible toys, musical instruments, whatever. The, my suggestion to look at is to look at a $15 cap, where if it's over $15, then a fee is assessed. If it's under $15, then a fee is not assessed. That's my suggestion.
Yeah, I don't think we can compare him to a pawn shop.
No, 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 we can't compare him to a pawn. It's, you can, but you can't.
But he looks like you've got something.
Just from our standpoint of how we have to run the reports and how we have to pull this, and I understand the direction that Councilman Ryan is, you know, trying to gear it towards a dollar amount, but in order for us to be able to go through and find the dollar amounts that count towards the fee and towards the don't, so given this last month, we would have 524 tickets that we'd have to individually click on to see what the dollar value is that they upload. So, every month, and that's one business. And so, when we're looking at all the other secondhand businesses and whoever is included in there, we would have to individually have somebody sit through and click through each and every transaction on this report, all 524, to see, and then that will list what items were done and what the dollar amount is given and stuff.
Couldn't they only report the high value items?
Well, the problem with only reporting the high dollar value items is, is it possible that low dollar value items could be stolen and could be pawned, where somebody knows, hey, let me just skirt under and, you know.
Get the magic number?
Run it that way. So, that's just from the standpoint of how we have to administer it and how we have to look into it, that would be a daunting task to try and go through.
The idea of a dollar amount, if it applies to him, it applies to everybody.
Yes.
Okay? So, somebody goes and breaks into a garage and takes all these items, okay? Are they worth $14? Yes, and you add them up, the person might have $1,000 with the goods brought in, but the individual price of these items aren't a lot, but they're all sellable.
Right, we set the limit at $5. Magically, the pawn, you know, are all the transactions at the pawn shops now going to be $4.99?
Transactions, because that's what this is. It's on a transaction, not the items. It's on the transaction. So, they'd have to make 30 trips to sell their.
A transaction is they bring it all in and put it on the counter.
That would have a value of $1,000, under your example.
At that point, because that entire transaction. They would have to, let's say they, someone stole $1,000 worth of books. And they add $5 apiece, do the math, that's a lot of individual transaction that the person's going to make, and that's going to raise a red flag in itself. Why is one person making 500 transactions? Okay, he's intentionally skirting what he was trying to do, and that's going to cause, you're like, hey, we're going to look at this person.
I think all these things are discussions we need to have if we do indeed.
Yeah.
Work towards updating the ordinance.
At this point, though, based on non-paid fees and the license renewal is denied, you're really operating without a license.
As soon as I get back to Birmingham, we'll send you a check. You have my word.
And Madam Clerk, if you could follow up, make sure we get what we need and they get what they need to continue doing business.
You could establish a committee to review what you want to do with the ordinance.
We could, I'm not going to do that tonight, though.
I appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
You brought up a lot of great issues.
Yeah, we have a motion on the table.
What was the motion again? I forgot.
To reevaluate secondhand.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Any further discussion about that? I'll throw some ideas out, we'll figure out how we can move forward, I'll talk to the city attorney, get her suggestions, and we'll continue this, okay? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
No.
Trenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, I think this will be a much easier item, is our.
You think so?
I don't know. You could have got lunch and came back.
I know.
Utica's gasoline alley.
I've given you guys, this is a traffic map that I made out.
Hey, you're getting all fancy, Rick.
Oh, yeah, we're getting real fancy here. Thank God I got a meg. There's a couple of things that are new this year, but the traffic is about the same.
Watch your foot.
You're, you're.
I'm grabbing.
Hey, Ron, is this one of your photos?
No. Thank you.
Okay.
Looking for volunteers. Begging.
I understand there's some sore feelings because someone won the, selling raffle tickets last year. Someone, I can't mention names, but it arrives, Mayor Calendrino.
We had a dump story for you.
No, I'm out of town. I'm out of town, plus I'll be washing my hair that day.
This guy's been around long enough, he knows I don't need a company.
Sore feelings from last year, reported.
I already got one of these, I need one of the other ones.
So many tickets.
Rick, could you go to the podium, give us your name and address?
You all know me, my name's Rick Mike Lon. I reside across the street at 7551 Auburn Road. I've been running, being the chair of the car show for the last probably seven or eight years. This year, it's going to be about the same as last year. We'll go over the budget first. Everything is pretty much to what I'm going to spend. The only thing which is the sponsor signs and show signs, I haven't gone through the old ones and decided what we're going to use and what we're now going to use. So, last year, I spent $700 or $800. I put an extra $1,000 on it just in case we want to change the road signs. But I don't think I'll be spending any of that, probably going to try to use all the road signs again. I've just been changing the dates on them, so you don't know, I don't know what condition they're in from last year. If you have any questions on the road closures, I've gone over everything with the chief of police and the fire department and with the gentleman at the DPW now. So, that's pretty much the same as it was last year. This year, I'm here to beg you for the young man that we're going to try to dedicate the show to, it's Beckett, he's four years old, he's at St. Jude. So, we'd like to take all the extra money that we make and donate it to the family because he has to spend five months there and the family's got to be with him. So, I'd like to get your permission to do that.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ryan.
Support.
Support by Sakura. Any discussion from counsel? I would like to say Rick, Megan, myself met with the parents of Beckett last week one day, right?
Yeah, we got to meet Beckett, so.
Sweet, sweet little guy.
You know, just, I'm telling you, it's just, the best part of this whole deal is that we're taking somebody in the community that really needs it, that we can actually see where the funds are going. And, you know, just pray to God that it's, you know, that it comes to be a great situation for him. But he's just such an active young man, you know, really.
Likes suckers, too.
Oh, yeah.
He ate half the bowl.
He's a car guy, so I'm all for it.
Mr. Obdel.
Will you call me tomorrow?
Okay, I appreciate that. You know, anybody that's got, you know, we need donations. I've already got enough donations to cover the cost of the show. Show's not going to cost the city, it's never cost the city anything, like I said before. Before it cost the city any money, I'll take money out of my pocket to do that. But any of you guys that have sponsors, I'm only one guy, and I can, I only go so far, you know, I've got about 20, 22 sponsors so far, and I got some more tonight. But, you know, it'd be really nice to have like 30 or 35 sponsors to, you know, give a good money to his parents.
What level sponsorships do you have?
They start at 300 and they go up to as high as, Weingart's gave $1,500, they're on the billboard. Utica Towing gave $1,000, they're sponsoring the Dragsters, because, you know, the Dragsters cost us a grand to come in. And I've got probably five or six, $10, $500 sponsors, you know, so. I didn't bring a list of the sponsors, I can't tell you, but we're, I usually take in between, any, from sponsors between 8,000 to 15,000, depends on how many sponsors we get. And this year, the show, we're going to, I'm planning on having 300 to 350 cars. I'm figuring, last year, we had 300 cars in the parking lot, and I'm going to try to get $10 a car donation instead of five. So, we, you know, we want to make a reasonable sum. My goal is to give the family $20,000 if we can, if we can reach that goal. So, that's what I'm trying to do.
Just send an email to me on that, too, okay?
Okay. So, and I also got the Lions Club, they're going to, any of the monies, like Target wouldn't give us any money because we didn't have a 501(c), so they're going to give the money to the Lions Club, and the Lions Club's going to donate it to the family. You know, our Lions Club's going to be very active this year. They're not just having a breakfast, they're going to have a lunch afterwards, you know, so we're going to expand it more with the Lions as much as possible.
And what does the check actually get made payable, the city of Utica?
Well, all the sponsors make the checks payable to the city of Utica.
Oops, back there. Treasure.
Treasure.
I knew I did it.
Oh, geez. He's not happy, look at him.
He's never happy.
Excuse me, but there's going to be a problem if your checks are made out to the city. Because the city of Utica cannot spend money for one individual that it's not doing for everybody in the city. If this project is going to go through as Rick wants it to go through, he is, should best arrange with the Lions Club to have the funds go through there or set up a Utica Gasoline Alley 501(c)(3) that's going to sponsor this event. And it's going to pay all the expenses, it's going to take in all the revenues. Now, it's too late, I'm sure, to set up a 501(c)(3) at this point. So, he'd be much better off getting into an agreement with the Utica Lions to sponsor the project and have all the funds run through them.
And I don't see an issue with that, I've already talked to the pros.
Yeah, we can meet with the pros this week if you'd like. We'll get this.
Question, what about sponsors that have already written checks to the city of Utica?
I'm not aware that any have.
I have.
I, well, if it's been received in, then we'll have to return.
No, there's been nothing received in yet. We have, we have costs. The city pays for printing, some signs, advertisements. So, any, any checks made out to the city of Utica can be reimbursed, you know, used to reimburse those expenses.
Okay.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, that's not an issue. I'll make sure that the city of Utica's taken care of properly. I'll be responsible for any debt.
I'm not, it's not the debt that I'm concerned about, I mean, yeah, I am concerned.
I understand, but I should have talked to you first, I didn't, I didn't think about that.
The fact that we can't be issuing, collecting these donations and issuing payments out to a private entity.
Right, the last thing we want to do is collect money for a kid with cancer and then have it tied up in, yeah, yeah, that's the last thing.
We had a similar issue with the Toys for Tots.
And I think it's probably a good thing that the Lions Club are involved with that, you know? I think we should even advertise that, you know? I'll change the advertisement. Now, let me go with the Lions Club and we'll straighten out, we'll make the Utica Lions the beneficiary, you know, to give to the beneficiary.
Yeah, so if people donate to the Lions Club, they can specify that they wanted to go for this and not.
Right, all I have to do is put it in for Beckett, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping us out of trouble, Mr. Paternoster, appreciate it.
I knew there was a reason why I had to come here tonight.
So, we do have a motion on the floor and support. Any further discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Rick, I look forward to it. I got to get new walking shoes because I'm going to be on my feet all day selling raffle tickets.
Now that we're done with that, I need volunteers, you know, I'm not that good at begging, you know, so if you've got any friends, you know, that, you know, or any businesses, you know, that might want to be a sponsor or donate to the, to the cause,
that might wanna be a sponsor or donate to the, to the cause, I would appreciate it, you know. Like I said, I'm only one man, I got a lot of stuff on my, on my payroll now.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
I thank you for the opportunity.
Next on the agenda is the Cassie Hines Shoe Cancer Foundation Glow Run. Good to see you again, sir.
Good to be seen, if it weren't for the amazing efficiency of Madam Clerk. She was so good at it last year, you voted on it before we even got a chance to get in here, so. My name is Chris Hines, I reside at 56326 Kirkridge Trail in Shelby Township. I brought a, what can I call him, our assistant, our co-chair, Ryan Swakowsky. I'll let him tell his address.
Hi, I'm Ryan Swakowsky, I'm at 47504 South Fork Drive.
Glad to be back here again, our fifth year in the city of Utica, been just a great relationship all along. September sixteenth, we're asking for the same motion as we have done in the past, to close down Auburn Road from Utica, the traffic signal, traffic signal at Utica Road to the entrance of Riverbend's Trail. Both directions from seven thirty to eight, reopening the westbound lanes from eight to eight thirty, but still keeping the, reverse that. Eastbound lanes open back up, westbound lane stays closed for the runners to return back into Jimmy John's, and then by eight thirty, it's all wrapped up.
And this is exactly what we've done the last...
No changes whatsoever. I brought Ryan with me, Ryan is actually going to help kinda co-chair this as we go forward. That's why I wanted to have him be able to come in and introduce himself as well, 'cause you'll see his face also. He is the head varsity coach, actually, at Utica High School slash Eisenhower High School lacrosse team. And also, our daughter Cassie used to drive him to high school at Eisenhower, and so he has expressed a very deep interest and certainly understands Cassie's vision as well in helping young adults with cancer, so we're glad to have him as part of our team. Obviously, we wanna make sure that, Chief, you are familiar again with all the things we do, I know you are, and congratulations, by the way, as well, well deserved. So we're just excited about the opportunity for year number five.
Excellent, Chief, do you have any concerns?
No, Mayor, we've had a really good relationship with the race organization and stuff, and it's been a really good relationship, and there hasn't been any issues or anything.
Excellent. Well, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the Cassie Hines Shoe Cancer Foundation Glow Run.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Trenzi, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Boy, you had to sit through a lot for that, didn't you?
No, actually, I was just saying, it's actually fun watching government in action. Keep up the great work.
But we know the saying about making sausage and all, we know that...
Thank you again, everybody.
It's like watching paint dry. And I'm sure I'll see you the evening of the event.
I sincerely hope so.
You will.
We've run across you a number of times on the track, so. Good night.
Good night.
I think you said government inaction. I think that was just two words. He was watching government inaction, you know.
Is it like, what's the opposite of Congress, regress?
All right, moving along here, department reports. Not much for me tonight, I would like to say to our new DPW superintendent, Mr. Diamond, thank you for the great work. I know it's only been a week, right, one week only, I think? Two weeks. And you're getting a lot of stuff done, I appreciate it. I'll let you cover, you know, what you're doing or getting done when we do your reports, but I appreciate the communication and all the effort in getting things going in the city, so thank you. Does anyone else from council have anything to report tonight? Nothing from planning, nothing from assessing, nothing from billing. Ms. Francis, library report.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you have a letter of resignation from Kelly Calendrino, who has resigned from the library board, which leaves a vacancy. In her letter, you'll see that she mentions a recommendation for Megan Gubino to be on our board. So if council approves that, then we can fill that vacancy.
I will make a motion to appoint Megan Gubino to fill the vacancy of Kelly Calendrino.
Support. Motion by Sikora, support by Robinson, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson. Mayor Calendrino.
Should I abstain? No.
Maybe, technically. Maybe, actually.
Are you financially benefiting from this transition?
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report from the library?
Some reading is going great. If you wanna say thank you to all of our sponsors, USA Tire, thank you very much. Sorrento's Pizza, Dairy Queen, Dave and Buster's, Jimmy John's Field, Zapzone, Odd Pizza, who've had quite a few nice donations that have made the world of difference to our program, yeah. So it's been the most successful in attendance-wise, we've had almost a hundred kids sign up. And it's going well, we only have one hour left.
I saw the Squirt Gun portraits today, or? That looked really cool. They look cool. Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Francis. Chief, we'll say, report for fire.
Oh, nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Wow. Chief Kaluzny, police report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Included in your packet is the agenda item summary, and this is on behalf of Officer Randy Plant. Officer Randy Plant has been a member of the police department for going a little over twenty-two years, I believe. And what he's looking to do is he's looking to enter an agreement with the city to allow him to purchase service credit. This is something that's currently not in the collective bargaining agreement, so he's looking to enter into that agreement with the city. Officer Plant is looking to utilize some private dispatch time under Act 88. What I had done to do my due diligence was contact the pension attorney and run this situation through the pension attorney to make sure that everything is legally sound. And the use of his dispatch time will qualify him for the service credit time. So what Officer Plant is looking to do is purchase kinda the latter half to get him to the twenty-five years of service. And actuarial was done on the calculations, and the total amount would be funded completely from Officer Plant, and there's a dollar amount there in the packet. And so what I would be looking for is a motion to authorize the mayor and city attorney to draft and execute a memo of understanding, allowing Officer Plant to purchase service credit at the full actuarial amount. So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deanne, support by Ryan, any discussion from council?
Yeah, I, I'm going to come out as the village idiot on this one and ask, what does purchasing a service credit entail, what does that mean?
So what that means is, what that allows a member to do is he is purchasing the time to get him to a twenty-five-year period in his employment to make him eligible for his pension. So what happens is the actuary runs calculations on what the cost is gonna be for him to actually purchase that time, and in this instance, it's one year, four months, and a couple of days and stuff. So that's what that total amount equates to, the time that he's buying. So that money goes into the pension system to fund for the time that he's actually accruing into his pension.
That was ridiculously helpful, thank you. That was very good.
So with this, it's like getting an earlier retirement.
That's, it's getting an early retirement, but it's being funded, he is funding the portion, he is, Officer Plant is buying and funding the portion of what the cost is.
I understand that will cover wages, does it also cover the benefits such as healthcare and everything else, is that calculated into this?
So when you look at, when you look at the wages and stuff, and as, in this situation, if Officer Plant were to hypothetically retire in July, what would happen is, his benefits would go from a family plan down to a two-person plan, so there's gonna be some savings in there. As you bring on a new employee, generally, you know, based on the new employees that we've hired here, they've all been single, young officers and stuff that come in at a lower rate for the officers. There's also savings, when you look at kinda the long-term other benefits and stuff, that may be in there, the longevity and stuff, that he's not gonna be accruing as he's, as he's going through his thing that could increase down.
Additional savings would be, he's topped out salary-wise, and he'd be replacing with someone at a much lower rate.
That's correct.
Any further discussion from council?
Yeah, but he's good, you know.
You do lose his experience.
Right, exactly.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Anything else to report tonight, sir?
Nothing more from the police department, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Diamond, DPW report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In front of you on the agenda item, we have a motion to appoint myself as the new representative for the Public Act 51 compliance for the street administrator. So I would be removing Bill Lang and putting myself in as that, to stay complying with Public Act 51.
I'll make a motion to do just that.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Robinson, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson. Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report tonight, sir?
I'll, I'll just add that it's been a great two weeks to start. The crew that you have hired in the past have been excellent. They've been working together well with me, alongside me, and for me. We've been trying to knock out some things, and I know that we're on the list, so you'll see, we did some striping, we're working on the boat launch, which is, entails a lot more than what originally we thought per our conversation, but things are going great. It's nice to see a great group of guys that keep our equipment running, saving the city a lot of money for that, so, you know, the handiness and the skillset that they have is a great asset to the city, and it's something that I appreciate, so I hope that you guys do the same. So, it's been great, and looking forward to keep going on, so.
Excellent. Couple of guys anonymously contacted me and said very nice things about you two, so. The feeling's mutual between you two.
Come on.
The hammer hasn't totally dropped yet.
See how goes next month and next month? I'll give you an update. Is that everything you have tonight, sir?
That's everything, unless you have any questions for me.
No, excellent. I don't believe we have anything from our treasurer tonight. Madam Clerk, anything from city administration?
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council, in your packet, I have a request to create the office of deputy clerk as a full-time position. As you remember, in March of 2021, we decided to break up the DPW administrator position and the building department and the, excuse me, the deputy clerk into part-time positions. We've tried that for two years, and in my budget session, we did go through my budget to allot for the hiring of a full-time clerk, so that is what I'm asking you to do, to authorize the mayor and I to post that position as full-time.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Trenzi, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson. Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you all.
Anything else to report tonight?
I will give you a heads up, I appreciate you asking. The Macoma elections was, Macoma elections was here today as a follow-up to two weeks ago. I was randomly select, the city of Utica was randomly selected for a post-election audit. It's my first time, I'm really glad it was a school election. They picked one precinct on the election that I combined all the precincts, so that was great. But I, we passed, everything was great with our, with our election. Some new things that are coming up because of, excuse me, of last November's election, nine days of early voting is now going to be a thing. I am going to reach out to some neighboring communities to see if I can help with the cost to partner with them instead of holding our own. But I just wanna give a heads up that there will be budget amendments, because what I did a lot for, for the election next year is a presidential election, so there will be the February presidential primary, and then obviously August and November, so it will be not cheap, so I just, a little heads up on that, yes, sir.
Question, is this nine days now for every election that's going to be held?
Yes, sir. So, so that is my, my little heads up. When I have more information, I will certainly share it with you.
Thank you very much. Parks and Rec, Ms. Schmidt.
Hello, Mayor and Council, I'm just trying to get my little notes here. Unfortunately, Tom was not able to attend tonight, he was supposed to help present tonight. He's with Connect Macom. We're doing this in conjunction with them, and our fall festival here is tentatively named Nightmare on Auburn. So we are looking, we have spoken with the chief here, and we are looking to close Auburn for the date of October 7th for our, our festival. You should have in your packet the map of what areas we wanna close down, and I know Chief Kaluzny has been in contact with Tom with some of the questions that each of them had for each other. So basically, the event, we're just kinda gonna be doing some, you know, there's several events that are planned for, I guess I'm just looking for a motion to actually have this event and close the street down. We'll have the vendors that are not on Auburn, we'll have them lined up in the street so that all of the businesses in the city of Utica can attend without having to impede Van Dyke traffic and keep everybody safe. We'll have a live Bigfoot walking the street of Auburn, and people have to take photos of it and, you know, and tag our event so that, you know, we get some traction, you know, and then it'll be, it'll be a fun event with some prizes along with that. There'll be a beer tent, and Connect Macom will be taking care of getting that liquor license and all that stuff, he's got all the connections for that.
And Connect Macom is now the name of the Sterling Heights Regional Chamber of Commerce? They just changed their name like last week, so when she's saying Connect Macom, she's talking about...
Yeah, it's the Sterling Heights Chamber.
Take my eyes.
And then the other thing, and we kinda gave some, if my phone cooperates, we kinda gave some examples of some of the other items that we're gonna do, like, we'll have like a little punch card, and they go into all the different businesses and they get a punch, and you punch all the businesses and you get your, and each business can do whatever they wanna do. Like, he gave examples, let's say Shamrock wants to give out free fries. You get your punch card, and you visit all the different businesses. But in order to get those punches, you have to go into the businesses. So, you know, then, like I said, the Bigfoot, and then the Zombie Walk, and they'll have some crafters and vendors, and there'll be a family fun zone. He's also talking about possibly doing some trick-or-treating. So, just, again, looking for a motion to be able to close that road, the road, and have that event.
So moved, it sounds like a fun day.
Motion by Trenzi.
Support.
Support by Sikora, any discussion from council?
Are these items already, like Shamrock Pub, Free Fries?
No, no, he just did a little mock thing of what it's gonna look like.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's just a little mock.
Eyes glazed over.
Just for example.
I always thought it was french conole, and I got that.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, there was a motion by Trenzi and second by Sikora?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, absolutely.
I just wanna make sure, in this event, you're looking to have the beer tent that have people openly walk around with them, that's correct.
I do believe that is what he was talking about.
So I just wanna, I've been in discussions with the gentleman that she's referring to, Tom.
Tom, yeah, Tom.
And from the police department, we have a number of concerns about having that, and how that's gonna affect and how we're gonna safely be able to coordinate and services and stuff that's gonna dawn on the police department to run the beer tent like that, and then what effects, obviously, it's gonna have on the businesses if you're in a beer tent, people are openly walking around with them.
Should we amend to subject to them working with our police department?
Approval with, from the police.
Approval from the police.
Thinking back on the social...
We'll make an amendment.
Kind of, yeah.
It does kind of sound like it, yeah.
With the social district thing, it is not part of the social district. If you look at the map, there's actually, he's got certain things where, where he's got the red lines on the map. That's where he'll have barricades so that people know that they cannot go past that point with the alcohol. There's like.
Ultimately, anything done though has to be sanctioned by Chief Kaluzny and the police department.
Absolutely.
I would ask, I think it would be good to amend your motion at this point.
I'm wondering if we should amend the motion to that we are just approving the date in the road closure. We're not approving the beer tent because that hasn't been even discussed yet.
Just to have the event and to close the road.
Well, it's, it's included in here, but it's, you gotta kind of scroll down into it. So I just wanted.
The motion was actually just to hold the event and to close the roads.
Right.
Right.
Am I right?
Include closing down the road between Auburn and Cass. That was, that's the, what we're, that was the motion.
Right.
Yes.
For eight hours.
Part of the.
Where are you going to close the road down at?
Auburn Road, from, basically from the gravel lot to Cass.
And it's on Saturday?
October seventh.
And it's on Saturday, October seventh, yes.
So anything else that, you know, needs approval, we can address that later, but.
Yes.
I think we need to make sure that Connect McCombe understands that I don't want them to get ahead of their skis. You know, anything that they do has to be approved by Chief Kaluzny and the police department.
Right.
And the fire department too.
And the council too.
Yeah, so I'm assuming, maybe I shouldn't assume, but you'll be coming back to council to approve like the final model of what this thing's going to be, right? All the specifics?
Yes. It, we couldn't form the committee until we got council approval to get all the details done. So we needed to get the council approval before we could, you know.
Very good. So be clear, just to be clear.
Yes.
What we're approving tonight is closing the roads and blocking that date off for the event. But we're going to want to hear more and, and council's going to need to approve it, what the event's actually going to look like, okay?
Yeah, for sure.
Yes, it's the first year and.
It does, mayor. Is there, is there a time, because there's two different times that she has on here, closing the road from twelve to six and twelve to eight. So I really.
That's just a, again, that is a, it could possibly be, it's one of those details that hasn't been completely solidified yet on the timeframe. I guess it's probably going to be a twelve to six simply because it's our first year doing things and we're just trying to piece it together.
Let's get all those specifics together and come back to council next month, okay?
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
But the dates, the dates there and.
The date and the road closure.
In, in concept, we're approving blocking the roads, but we definitely need more specifics, okay?
Yeah, Tom might have had more specifics, but he had something come up last minute today, so.
That's okay. Anything else to report from Parks and Rec? Or we didn't vote yet.
We didn't vote.
We didn't have a, any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Ryan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to present tonight?
Just another reminder that Friday at one o'clock, Grant Park and the Lions Pavilion, we will be having the Reptarium. We're bringing, we're bringing the zoo to you, so please join us. It's going to be a very fun event because it was last year. I, I enjoyed it more than some of the kids. It's true. And then also on Wednesday, August second, since we won't have a meeting in between there, Wednesday, August second is our park, a parket movie in the park at Grant Park again. So again, another fun time for the kids. The movie will be Encanto, which is one of my favorite movies, so, again. So yeah, so please join us for all of that. We'll have a good time.
What time is that?
Which one?
The, the movie in the park, parkas?
Six o'clock. Am I correct?
I think that's it.
They don't play the movie until about seven.
I think the movie starts at seven. I think everything, you know, the, the pregame starts.
Is there going to be a DJ there? And pregame? There's always music.
The Lions, the Lions will be there again with.
Yeah, the Lions will be there. And last year he had a vocalist, a duo. It's a Mumford and Sons, or Mountford and Sons, sorry. So, yes.
Excellent.
It's all right.
Lots of fun stuff. Thank you.
What's that?
Nothing from Historic District Commission tonight. City attorney?
Nothing per se for me today, mayor and council, other than this was the spot reserved. If council wished to make any motions in relation to items discussed in relation to the marijuana licenses during the work session.
I would think we're, my position is we should have a motion to allow the city attorney to RFP, a experienced marijuana attorney, to review our ordinance, to take input from us eventually, you know, once in place, to see what we want to do. But none of that can be done until she.
And is that to include another license though, or not? I mean, you're saying just to review, because I don't think there's a need to hire a lawyer just to review the ordinance unless we're looking to add licenses. That, that wouldn't be my recommendation.
Well, I think to add licenses, I think we need the advice of the attorney, how many or where. I think that's part of the advice I would be looking for from the attorney.
Right.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the city attorney to RFP for a marijuana attorney. Is that the proper language? And I'm getting the motion there so that we can hopefully get support and then have a discussion before we vote. Motion by me, support by Robinson?
Deanne.
Deanne. That was Deanne. All right, we are open for discussion.
I think it should be the exact opposite way. I think we need to figure out what we want our marijuana laws to be. Then we take that to the attorneys and say, how do we make this happen?
Thank you.
I don't, I don't think we should have people telling us what our policy should be. We should be telling them, this is what we want our policies to be. How do we make that work?
My intentions in suggesting that was that then the new firm or lawyer would come into a new work session where you guys would give direction on how many licenses, where, all those details.
But see, that's, how many, like, we haven't even discussed any of that.
We haven't even decided.
So that's the decision that Brad is saying that we need to know where we want to be.
Right.
The attorney would be, I guess, the idea that you bring them on board of how to do it. But we really don't know what if, how many, where. That's, that's got to be us. I don't think.
I think if you're going to add licenses, now's the time to RFP for that locker. But that does not require you to hire them. It's just an RFP. If you're not interested in adding licenses, then don't RFP for a lawyer.
Well, that's something, again, we haven't really sat down and had a work session to discuss. I, I mean, one, two, zero.
Well, and then, well, and then the licenses obviously are very important to, just frankly, to the lobbyists and the business owners. But what about the actual letter of the law requirements, blah, blah, blah? I mean, do we want to change any of that? Was part of the broader conversation. I think we need a work session, probably just with us, to say specifically.
You can't have a work session just with, I mean, we just had a work session with us. Or are you talking?
We can't be long with meetings, is what I'm saying.
But we had a work session about the question of whether or not we should even consider revising the ordinance. We didn't actually talk about what those revisions ought to be.
Right.
In my opinion, that, again, you know, this is open for discussion. The way I was seeing it was we were going to get consultation from this attorney on those items.
That's kind of where I was too. The only reason I think that, I agree, I hear what Ken's saying, I, I follow logic. My only thing was, we started having discussions on where we want to go. And without the advice of council, we start moving the ship in the direction. And he says, you're going the wrong direction. We need to go this way. If, I think that if we do look at putting on RFP, that attorney, that attorney that would work with us could help us form our ordinance the way we want it to go and then he would work under those guidelines. Not, not us just going out and be like, hey, does this work? He's like, not really. And then we wasted some time and moved our wheels without the.
And money too, yeah.
But it's a, if I, if I may, it comes back to what we just said. We as a council don't know where we want to go.
Right.
If we make a decision where we want to go, then if we go that direction, then it's somebody telling us exactly how to do it. If you want to motion strictly right now for somebody to review the current ordinance to say that has to be straightened up so we don't get sued or whatever, I mean, you've defended it. I don't know if that's something we need to do or not.
That's not my recommendation.
Yeah, no.
That's not your recommendation, so.
This is to review the ordinance, assuming we want to move forward with more licenses.
Okay, but we don't know that answer. We haven't really, whether.
Well, I think we'll know after we, I think that's in the vote tonight. We wouldn't hire the lawyer, really, we wouldn't hire this attorney if we were looking to, at the potential of, of having more licenses. So if you vote yes, you're open to more licenses. You're open to more licenses. If you vote no, then council's not going to move forward with anything. You know, we're going to keep everything status quo. If you vote yes, we're going to.
The minute you vote yes, you just told everybody out in the world that the onslaught begins in Utica. Buy up your properties, get ready, here we go.
Well, I mean, there's.
But governments have to be transparent, I mean.
A date of initiation. There has to be some definitive date that has to happen. If you're going to do it, do it. If not, then, you know.
And that's, that's an option.
I just, I, never in a million years would I contract a company to redo my kitchen and have no idea what I want that kitchen to look like, right?
So you consult with that person before you put them to work?
Absolutely not. No, I want to know what my kitchen is going to look, I want it to be a mid-century modern kitchen with checkered tiles and blah, blah, blah.
Architector designer.
And then they go and do the architecting and designing and make it happen.
Well, not, not everyone has your artistic value. Some people need to be led down the path perhaps.
No, I don't want to be led by anybody. And that's where we're going.
Well, that's why we have.
We're hiring an attorney to lead us to do what.
We, well, we make, we make the laws, Kenny, but we just have them interpret them for us and tell us which way we got to go so we don't make mistakes or fumble.
Well, no, that's, it all comes down to, I guess, however you vote tonight, Eric, you're saying you want more licenses or you don't. And I don't.
See, I, this is where, I'm sorry to interrupt Ken, but this is where my, my interpretation of what we're doing tonight, and I could be wrong, is that we're maybe pursuing whether it's worth it to revisit our ordinance.
But that's up to us, that's not.
I understand that, but to have some kind of guidance, if we did move forward with that, what would that look like? Yeah.
But Gus just said, if you vote yes, that means you won.
That means you're interested in the pursuit of.
Yeah, you can still, you can still.
Forwarding the conversation.
You can still back on it.
We're moving forward. That doesn't mean. I don't think we're necessarily saying yes to. We're not handing over the reins to council, like Councilman O'Donnell said. If we vote to engage a lawyer, you know, that specializes in this, we're not handing over the reins. We're still going to tell whoever this lawyer is, you know, this is, and we probably will have to have work sessions to figure that out. This is what we're looking for, you know, this is how many licenses, this is the area. It doesn't mean we're just, we're, we're not saying, you tell us, to Brad's analogy, you tell us what we are going to do. No, we're still going to impact that.
But we don't know what we're going to tell him.
We don't know what we want.
You, you just said it. We're going to talk to him and say, if we do this, that, we don't know what we want to do yet. I don't think.
And Kevin would like to say so.
Not to interrupt, sorry, because you guys are in discussion. You guys voting yes, everybody tomorrow morning is picking up the phone and tying up a piece of property. That's what's going to happen. You guys voting no, everybody's going to sleep and nobody's going to do anything. That, because my phone hasn't stopped. What is Utica doing? What is Utica doing?
Sure.
What is Utica doing?
That, that process, that process is going to happen.
That's going to happen. If we move, if we move forward, that's going to happen no matter what.
People speculate like it's the gold rush regardless, whether, whether we, just the idea of talking about it, people have already went out and made their business decisions. I mean, you breathe the word, it's, it goes like wildfire, so I mean, it's quite.
How many calls have we gotten?
What we want to do.
We've been here five years ago.
At least ten, probably fifteen.
Already, before we even publish the package. So to clarify, what Ken, you're saying is that we need to decide as a council if in fact we are even open to having more dispensaries before we do anything. Is that correct?
And I don't care. It's got to be an open meeting. We can do it with everybody sitting there again. But I mean, tonight was.
It was just a work session.
It was a work session, but it really wasn't as productive of what it should have been. We eliminated time, all of that, and we really didn't put cards on the table.
Just one last thing I just wanted to say. I don't care which way you guys vote. Obviously, I own Cloud Canvas. Obviously, I want you guys to vote no because of Cloud Canvas and stuff. But if you guys vote yes, you're hurting your other businesses because if I'm a restaurant that's trying to come in, I can't get any property anywhere in here and everything is doubled. So you, there is two sides to it, but you guys can do what you want.
I, I really shouldn't be opening the floor to public comments at this point, so.
Gus, I do have a little point. If we put on RFP, we hire an attorney, this is not money, it is wasted money. We've already collected funds for legal fees ahead of the game.
The money from our marijuana activity.
It's already, it's already noted, or it's already.
It has to be used for marijuana related.
So we, the money, we can use this, we can get an expert in here, say, hey, listen guys, here's what they've done here, here's what they've done here. They can, now what you want to do, they can give us choices to decide where we want to go. We don't like it, hey, that's not for us. But it's money that's already earmarked for the purpose of discussing these, these interests. So it's not like we're paying someone out of the city fund that is already designated for buying a new police car. This is money that's designated for having these conversations with the people that know better than we do. So we have ideas, we'll tell, we'll, we'll tell them that. We're the captain. We're driving the ship. They're the guy, they're the guy, you know, in the, you know, navigating for us.
Right. If we engage this lawyer, it doesn't mean automatically we're changing the ordinance and we're getting licenses. I mean, that's really just for counsel and advice.
Expert, expert consultation.
So what?
I think we should wait to decide whether we as a council want to do this, open up Pandora's box before we do anything. What mechanism does that, how does that happen in your mind? Just to be more educated on what we need to do for the best, for the best, what's best. How do you become educated? I think there's a lot of information that we don't know yet. How do you obtain that information? You talk to a marijuana attorney? Yes. That we're talking about engaging right now.
And our attorney is great, but she, she knows her area and marijuana is not actually.
Well, no, 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 no.
Why are we hiring an expert though?
Because there are a lot of allegations made in relation to this litigation about people knowing people or having relationships with people. They didn't go anywhere, but this insulates us in the future by having a different firm with no connections handling this stuff.
All right, thank you.
My point is, you're hiring an attorney to evaluate what information we give them. But we don't have a clue right now what we want to give him to evaluate, him, her, that person. Because we aren't deciding one license, two licenses, no licenses, west of Van Dyke, west of the export. We haven't discussed any of that as a council. Nothing. And I don't care if there's a hundred people listening to us, the next worst session could go three hours as long as we're talking about. We got twenty-five minutes crammed down our throats today, okay? And we're asking to really make a decision of what this city is going to do or not do. And I don't think that does the residents justice and I don't think it does us justice. Because if it falls on its face, we're the ones that are going to be told you spent twenty-five minutes on your decision. And yes, Kevin's right, we say yes tonight and you think anybody can, why do you think nothing's developed on Van Dyke? Because of the continued speculating. What's going to happen over here? If you don't already own the building, the prices are going to go up. There was an issue of traffic. It's not just Christmas time that you can't get out of that parking lot. So to say you're going to stick it in there, you're backed up. I was backed up there today, okay? I couldn't get out of there for three lights. Now you put another thousand people, okay, in there, is it better than maybe Van Dyke? Yes, but is it better, period? So I, I, I am, you know how I feel, period. But I will gladly listen if this council can talk to each other. If we decide this is where we're going to go, then we know, have to have an expert to tell us how to get there.
So what, what are you looking for? Another work session?
That, that would be my point.
That maybe, what, it happens at the end of a council meeting, so there's a limit?
No, I want, you have a special day. Give me another Tuesday. I, I, I make sure my.
When there's no council meeting?
When there's no council meeting. Bring it in and we can start it the soonest I can ever do is six thirty. Six thirty to ten o'clock, I don't care what it is.
And how do we prepare for that meeting? What do we need to, as a body have to have a.
Right now, you're going to search your soul and decide where do you want this to go. Okay, and we all have to put it on the table, okay? Where do you think, and you have to say, okay, if I say no, but it's going to go yes, okay, in my mind, very easily I have to decide where do I think it should go if it does go. But none of that's prepared in my head.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
So.
But a lot of the reason that we're engaging the lawyer, you're just saying, in your opinion, we're putting the.
Carpe for the horse. That's all I'm saying.
But I don't, I mean, me, and I don't think Councilman Deanne or Councilman Robinson necessarily think that. I'm looking for, to them for advice, to help me make the decision.
But I think we as a council have to decide whether this is something we want, because if it's not, what's the point?
The attorney's gonna tell you how to do it.
I.
Not if we should do it.
So really, so really what we're trying to decide is if we're gonna do it.
I, can I hear what you're saying? I think the attorney telling us how gives us the if, because if the, if the how doesn't fit the if, then there's no point in doing it. So if they tell us, we're trying to put this round peg into a round hole, then great, thank you, Mr. Attorney. We're gonna move forward with our ideas. We're gonna have discussions on how we should do it. But if the attorney also tells us, listen, you're trying to put the round peg in the square hole, if it's not gonna work, you guys should really consider something, then we have that conversation, too. I think that, I always think the, we have the money to do it. The attorney does nothing other than listens to us, and that's fine, and they can gather up ideas. We can always consult with that person after the fact. But my thing is that they are expert at what they're doing. This is such a touchy subject, it should be done with professionalism from the beginning to the end, under the guidance of someone who's articulate and professional on that one particular strain of the law. I think there's value in that.
And I agree. If and when we decide what we want to do, we have no clue of where, when, how, how many, nothing, absolutely nothing. If it gets to decide we're gonna do anything, then that's when you pull the expert in to tell you how. And the idea, it's free money, you know, that money's used to fend off other lawsuits. They're all gonna happen after this.
Yeah.
One way or another, we're getting sued.
And delineators.
And delineator and all that. So this is not free money that, oh, it's not tax dollars. That money is collected in the licenses to do exactly what we've been doing with it. So to just say, go out and blow it, bullshit. Excuse me.
I agree.
Mouth on this one.
So, you have the motion? You made the motion?
To engage the attorneys, authorize Linda to RFP the attorney.
And there's a second.
Looks like a good one.
Who is my source?
It's juicy. A second.
I'm contemplating voting no on my own motion.
I don't think you can.
I mean, I hear what Councilman O'Donnell, I think it's just a difference in approach, right?
Yeah, I think we're all, we all want the same thing. It just thinks, do we want to hire an attorney to help us to get there, or do we want to do our own thing and then hire that person after the fact?
Help us to get where?
If, right.
We don't have a where.
To the decision.
No, but we don't have a where for him to help us. And if I'm gonna have that attorney counsel me as to what should happen.
Right.
That's, that's crap, because he's then making up our minds.
And unfortunately.
We as a body, we're elected to make our own minds, not rely on somebody else. What the attorney is there to make sure is we don't get in trouble.
Yeah, I'd say you started off right in doing it.
I, I, I think that, you know, we keep referring to the, to this marijuana attorney as an expert, but they're not. We need to take what we want to them. If you were maybe pitching, we're gonna have a marijuana policy consultant, and we're gonna pay him four hours to sit down with us, what do you want it to do, take these bullet points, then we would take that to an attorney. Putting the cart before the horse, I think, is the perfect way to put this.
That's exactly what we're doing.
We engage our city attorney on every ordinance prior to us even talking about. We come up with a concept, she finds the legalities in it, she sees this, that, she walks us through the process, and once the process is in there, then we decide how we want to do it.
But what we've decided at that point is that we are making a change.
You just said, we decided the concept. We have no concept.
Without hearing this.
Let's get to the concept.
That's right, let's get to it before we hire the attorney. You just contradicted yourself.
Disagree.
No. Yes, we do.
Because you talk loud doesn't make you right. Let me just start with that.
Just 'cause you overtalk me doesn't make you right either. So, let's vote.
Alright, let's vote.
I gotta get my words in sometimes.
Any further discussion?
Could you repeat the motion, Mr. Mayor?
I'm gonna try. This is a vote to authorize the city attorney to engage in a marijuana attorney for advice about.
No, to issue an RFP.
To issue an RFP, to engage a marijuana attorney. Did you get that?
I got it. I'm so sorry. Socorro.
No.
Terencey.
No.
O'Donnell.
No.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
No.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes.
You have three yeses.
I'm glad my vote didn't matter. One of the benefits of voting last. So, we're not done yet. Do we need a motion at this point to?
Schedule a work session.
I'll second that, support that motion.
You just made it, I'll support it.
Okay. Make a motion to, for us to meet and discuss whether this is something we want to move forward to add more.
And this will be on a Tuesday, non-council, non-council meeting Tuesday?
Sorry, Robinson, supported by Socorro.
Socorro. Any discussion from council?
No.
I really think we need to have an understanding of what we're trying to accomplish at yet another work session, though, right? I mean, what is the scope of the work session? What are we trying to, are we, is it deciding if we're moving forward?
It would be.
With, with more licenses?
You can't decide.
You can't decide anything, but you can still talk about, would you, can you talk about 1, 2, where, how?
What will work, what won't work.
Well, we can't officially vote on anything.
No, there would be no vote. We'd have to come back to a council meeting.
But at least then, we have some direction within ourselves. Right now, we have.
I think all these marijuana developers are having a lot of fun if they're watching live cable right now.
Exciting Channel 5.
Pardon me?
Right, yep.
There's coming at the end of the.
Yep.
After we get to this, you can.
Alright, so we'll look at some dates and try to get a work session scheduled.
Maybe six 30 or later.
Don't make it August 2nd.
Is there any other discussion about that motion? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socorro.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Alright, at this point, the floor is open for communication from the public. Anyone, for items that are not listed on the agenda, any item is fine. Really, you're limited to three minutes during public comment. Mr. McLaughlin?
Well, you know, I've been sitting here all night.
You gotta, you gotta go to the mic, though, so people at home can hear you.
Okay.
I've been listening about the marijuana situation all the time, and you gotta follow your heart. Do we really want another facility in this town? Do we really need another one? They're controlling the business community. We can't, a small business that has an idea that wants to come in and buy a piece of property can't, because the marijuana people are controlling the, the, the business community. I think 2 is plenty. I was against any of them at all. It's not good for our children. It's not good for our community. It's a necessary evil, alright? And the two guys we have are gentlemen. They do a good job. We don't need anymore.
They're stand-up guys.
That's all I have to say.
Stand-up guy.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
I'm Marvin Kezey. I own the Puff Utica on Hall Road and Van Dyke. Now, let's just say we, we did get into speaking about, you know, or the city got into saying, hey, let's do one more. Are we gonna do it right this time, right? Airtight, no lawsuits, you know, obviously, you know, we both know what we've been going through. You know, we, Kevin and I both signed on our application that, you know, we're gonna protect, defend, and hold the city harmless, and, and we've been doing it, and we've been standing up to that, you know, as, as gentlemen, we've been paying that bill. But, you know, the next, the next step is, hey, if you guys do want to adopt another ordinance that says, you know, you want another license, right? This, this facility has to be suited and fit for our capacity and our capabilities of what we do, right? It can't just be a building. It can't just be a small location that, you know, gets approved, and then now you're dealing with another traffic issue. So, you know, just keep in mind that if you guys do move forward on this, that something that has enough parking, enough, you know, a, a big enough facility that can handle enough people and turn around customers and not cause traffic jams or whatever issues that, you know, obviously, we've been, we've been, you know, going after properties and trying to tie them up. They're not as easy as, you know, people think they are, you know. When, when you own a cannabis facility and you want to buy the property next door, they think that you should pay the, you know, the marijuana money for it, and, you know, it's just not fair sometimes, right? You know, a lot of people that are neighboring properties right now still are banking on us, you know, banking on them getting another marijuana facility. There's a lot of mixed feelings in the air. There's people that are misled that still think that they're gonna get a dispensary there, they're gonna get a cultivation there, they're gonna get a processor there. And for us, that we want to expand and, and do better for our community and spend more money in Utica, pay more tax dollars, obviously, right, because we're gonna buy a property that was worth 200,000 or 300,000, pay a million dollars for it, like the apartment building, and Kevin wants to buy the gas station, and, you know, we obviously get hit with a lot more taxes, right, because assessment's higher. And, you know, we're, we're taking a blighted property and we're, we're making it a parking lot, we're making it lit up, we're trying to make the traffic issues. Our goal today would be what, Kevin? To, to make traffic better, right? So traffic's our main issue, right? All I'm saying is that in, in consideration of, if you guys do move forward on doing this, right, just, you know, I don't know how you guys can design the application, or how to design what you guys are doing, take and, take what we have going on, you know, and implement it into that new application and say, hey, look.
30 seconds.
We need, we need a large enough building, we need, you know, a lot of parking, right? And obviously, Utica Park Boulevard, my opinion, could use something over there, because I've been hearing, you know, attorneys sign and a few other guys mention that. But also, Rick, to, to what you had said, you know, we, we do help out the community, we help